We will call the September 10th Planning and zoning, Burley County Planning and zoning Meeting to order, and the first order of this will be roll call. Marla?
Okay, Commissioner Bitner? Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Here.
Commissioner Munson?
Here.
Commissioner Patrick?
Here.
Commissioner Rich?
Here.
Commissioner Streifel?
Here.
Commissioner Zurov?
Here.
And Chairman Agnew.
Okay.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the August 13th minutes, and I think you all have those before you. Any changes or?
Move to approve as presented.
Move to approve as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Zurov to approve, seconded by Commissioner Jarrett. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Minister approved. The consent agenda, we would, are you going to address that, Marla?
You can pass it through or I can present it.
What's that?
You can pass it through or I can present it.
Okay, the, on the consent agenda is the Hughes subdivision, which is in your packet, and Fishner's petitioning, or they want the, wants to build another horse arena without combining his lots. So, any discussion on that by the commissioners? Commissioners are off.
Move to call for a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to call for a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they will move to a public hearing at our next, be our October meeting, right? Marla?
Yes.
Okay. We have two items on the public hearing agenda. The first one is the Coontz accessory dwelling. Marla, you want to go through that with us?
Okay, this is a special use permit request from Albert Coontz. He would like to put up an accessory dwelling unit, and we published the announcement in the paper on August 27th and September 3rd. Surrounding property owners were notified August 28th, and Burley County website on August 28th. After reviewing his design for his accessory dwelling unit, we decided that, we advised him that it would be better to pull this public hearing and go to have a preliminary plat, go through the plating process and divide his lot, so that his accessory dwelling unit is two bedrooms, two bath, and that's not allowed. So, he's going to divide his property, and we are going to request canceling the public hearing. And that's, he'll be back next month.
Okay. Do we have a motion by one of the commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Zurov, seconded by Commissioner Munson, that we pull that public hearing, postpone that, or pull it from the agenda?
Pull it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Next item on the public hearing agenda is the 41-Win LLC. I think, Mitch, you're gonna do that one, right?
Good evening, Commissioners. Vice Chair Patrick, on your agenda in the packet is an application for a special use permit to place a met tower out in Canville Township, the Section 5 Northwest Quarter. Project is 197.66 feet. It would be temporarily placed, in place for 12 to 36 months. It's to be located on Muriel Rasmussen's property at 184th Street Northeast. Property contains 159.7 acres, and the area needed for this tower is about one acre. It's basically a data gathering tower for, to determine the wind loads and all. I'm not sure if, are you guys here? Okay. The applicants are here. In your packet is most of the information, location and site location. The only thing that I have concerns about, and I did talk to one of the applicants last week, is about, in their, in their application, they reference the ANSI standard, a 222, two, yeah, and 222H, and that's a structural design basically for, for these towers. It references specifications, design calculations, height and wind second, three-second gust idea, and for the antenna towers, including environmental loads such as ice and wind and snow. The project contained a stamped copy of that, of their construction-ready documents, but it was dated 2018. And it's, also, the engineer is not registered in the state of North Dakota. So, those are my concerns from a building side standpoint. And they, I talked, it wasn't you two guys, it was somebody else I talked to.
Bryson.
Bryson, yeah, he came in and said that.
They didn't have Bryson's.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so it's, it might be on my desk this week. So, any questions for me?
Vice Chair.
Commissioner Zurov?
Only question I have is, so typically on these types of applications, the petitioner slash developer, the landowner is usually included in something like that. Did she, did the Rasmussen family or one of their representatives sign the application as well? Or do you have, or did they include like a copy of the lease with, between them and the?
Either, Marla, you might have a copy of it, or may, maybe they have an agreement.
That was literally the only, that was literally the only thing on this whole application that jumped out at me. I mean.
Right.
Just making sure that everybody's.
They're aware.
Everybody's ducks are in a row because we got another wind project coming, Saul. Potentially, Saul.
Right. Maybe the applicant can answer that question.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing at this point, and as you approach the podium, would you please sign your name on the, I think it was on, yep, and then state your name for the commissioners and?
I'll finish this when I'm, when I'm done. Tim Ross, I'm a project developer with PRC Win, and we're developing the 41-Win project. The Rasmussens do have a lease with us, and we can provide it. If you, if we pass through tonight, we can make sure that it gets provided before the county commission makes the final determination. They're on board. We don't have a letter from them directly yet, but we'll certainly get one. And, and with the stamped drawings, I know Mitch, we had an email conversation a couple of months ago prior to submitting the initial application, and Mitch asked for updated drawings. I reached out to the company that's, that will do the installation. They reached out to the company that manufactures the tower, and their most recent drawings are the 2018 drawings. So, this past week, Bryson, who's at a conference this week, reached out to a couple of engineers here in town to see if we could get someone to take a look at those drawings, make sure that they still meet these ANSI standards, and, and stamp them, you know, with a local stamp, more recently dated. So, we're still working on that. But, you know, we, we would anticipate having, you know, if you want a copy of the lease, we can get that with the Rasmussens.
No, I don't think a copy of the lease is necessary. It's, I know it's sometimes included with application.
Sure.
Permit stuff, but no, the only thing I, that caught me is usually the petitioner developer is the owner of the land and the company, and I just saw in their report here that it's just the company.
Yeah.
So, I was kind of like, ah, all right.
Well, well, we can provide a statement from them, just to attach to the packet, you know, just so they have a little bit extra sense of security and, you know, the decision that you make, that they are on board, and, and have that, you know, as part of the final packet that goes to the Board of Commissioners, just so that, you know, we, we answer that concern for you.
So, so I understand that you're going to have an engineer look at that, and so the stamp is more current than the 2018 stamp?
That's our intent, yeah.
Okay. That was a good point, Mitch. You know, is that something that, when, if we approve this, that we should say that that would be part of the requirement?
That would be part of the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd make it part of the motion.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody else? Are you finished?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I need to say.
Any other comments from anybody else in the public hearing? Hearing none? Second call, any other comments? Any, anybody else want to speak? All right, third call. If we don't have anybody come up, we'll close the public hearing. Were you finished, Mitch?
Yeah, I should have questions for me.
Any questions? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. And any discussion from the commission, county, the Burley Planning Commission?
Move to approve special use permit with the conditions that a copy of current construction-ready documents, stamped foundation and structural drawings, construction plans should be designed to the current ANSI slash TIA dash 222H standard or equivalent, site plans, permit application, and I will also include some sort of agreement from the landowner or acknowledgement from the landowner that this is going on. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. You've heard the extensive motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Munson?
Hey, Mitch and Marla made it easy. I literally just read off.
Any further discussion?
Option, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We will call for a roll call vote. Marla?
Okay, the motion is to approve the, approve the special use permit on the condition that, I'm just gonna paraphrase, recent stamp drawing, current site plan, landowner's signature, and a North Dakota engineer's stamp. And we'll fill in those.
Copy of current ready construction documents, current, current standards, site plan, permit application, and approval from landowner.
Okay. Yes vote means you approve, and no vote means you do not. Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
Commissioner Streifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Patrick?
Yes.
All approved.
Okay. We have a new item on the agenda that Mitch wanted to address to us tonight,
As you may, maybe, our Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, the ETA discussions have been ongoing with the Burley County Commission and the City Commission. And we haven't seen many of you there at the meetings, but it's a big deal. This is quite a bit of transfer of land to Burley County and the responsibility of this county. Have we got a map up here This area here is, is where, let's see, I can't get my cursor on there. This area here, I'm in the northwest corner there, that's where our jurisdiction ends now. It's north of Burnt Creek. So, all the areas that is, are hatched in red will be, is part of their proposed growth development plan.
Traveling from the city to the county.
Yep. And so, it, from the city to the county. And that's what they'll probably be presenting next week. And so, it's, it's a, it's a big deal.
Mitch, is the gray the current city limit?
Yeah, that's, that is where their ETA is gonna stay.
But it's beyond city limits, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the city limits are much smaller than that. But the areas that you see that are hatched in red, those are the areas that they're, they'll be planning to cede to Burley County. If, if we accept it, or if they negotiate, I don't know. I, that's not up to me, I'm not pay grade, so. We're just, we're looking at, this is from what the most recent map that Ben had, or Daniel Naren had provided us. This is not the map that he provided. This is created by a GIS coordinator, which define, more defines the area, so, so people can see what areas we're talking about.
Is there a time schedule for this to happen, or?
No, we don't know. That's.
It was announced at our meeting, and it was discussed at the county a little bit, but the 17th at 5:00 PM.
The joint commission.
Yep.
Right.
They moved it, it's basically the Bismarck-Burley, but they moved it to 5:00, but it's the agreed-upon time. So, there's been discussions about both, and essentially, on the map, it would move 94% of all housing back to the county, and 6% would remain in the city ETA. And, but a lot of the land remains in the ETA. So, there's a little bit more interpretation that we need to understand. We were only showing a small part of it. This is the most comprehensive that I've seen, that you're presenting to us, so. But yeah, it's an all-hands-on, this is a conversation that's been, a lot of people have wanted for a couple of decades now, and getting us together, I think it's important.
Well, that would mean, then the county, that would mean that the county will have to begin to do such things as building permits and some of that stuff?
Well, on the map, you'll see that almost over 60% of their floodplains will be in now Burley County, along with the permitting and zoning. It'll increase our permitting just for building, probably around 50 to 60%, but it'll increase our floodplain regulations by probably 400%. So, 'cause it's, I mean, we had, last count, we had about 1,100 properties in, in floodplain area, flood, shaded ex一笑, and that sort of.
So, obviously, there's added expense on the county with taking this land over when it comes to things like permitting and road maintenance, all that type of stuff, or, I mean, do, I'm assuming with receiving this land, we're also receiving the tax roll for it.
Yeah.
You do already, okay.
So, it's, it is taxed, but.
The city, but the city doesn't receive the tax money for, I'm gonna say, road maintenance, all that stuff. The county currently does.
The county currently does most of the road maintenance in the ETA array.
What we get is the fees for the notices and that, where that would transfer to the county, too.
Okay.
I think the biggest part is gonna be on Mitch's staff.
Staffing.
Yeah, with permitting and regulating within that area.
So, you need, you need to hire three more Marlas?
Yeah.
Lot of data to transfer to our system from theirs.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Casey with Burley County Highway Department. So, a lot of the area out in the ETA, we do all the plowing, road maintenance, patching, everything. It's, the drainage issues, we deal with a lot of those. What we've done in drainage issues in the ETA is we work with the city, 'cause they're the governing authority for stormwater management plans. If it flips over and it's not the city anymore, then we work with the Burley County Water Resource District. On there, and that, part of the meeting this morning, they were asking some questions, and it was, it was, yes, there's some issues, but these are, a lot of those are known issues for many years. We know how a lot of that works, but the flood areas are the real challenge that goes through there. You also, if you have an MS4 violation, erosion control, that really changes, 'cause if there's an erosion issue, we would call the city of Bismarck, 'cause that was ETA that's under their control. They have the ability to go out and correct it, and if it's not being corrected, it's fined. Going through their, the county, since the county does not have a public works department, we cannot do that. So, we call Department of Environmental Quality at the state, and we work with them on any erosion issues, and they have the ability to regulate that and fine, as, as necessary going through there. So, a lot of the areas, you can see, like Misty Waters would come back in, Imperial Valley, and a lot of this is preliminary discussions. This has not been before the City Commission, and it's not been before the County Commission. They, they're gonna have a lot of input, and they, there'll be for and against. We've had discussions on this, first time I seen this actual full map that Daniel had was Monday afternoon, and he had areas closer to the city, they called it orange, that's the priority stuff. Some of it's actually in the city, some is right adjacent to the city, that's stuff that's ready to be developed or annexed shortly. They had, I called it dark orange, they called it red, I, whatever. That's the 25-year plan going through there. Then they had gray, which is more 50-year. And we had talked back and forth a bit of, you know, each area, you say it's for urban development, and the city's current intent is if those ever develop, it would be annexed into the city, be developed as urban additions into the city. And we're, well, from a county perspective, what we look at is, in 20 years, boards change. That's just a reality, and how people choose to look at things is different. 20 years ago was different than what it is today. And rural subdivisions were really big 20 years ago, but if they're big again in 20 years, if the, in that area, if it's developed as a rural subdivision, and even though it's in the urban service area, how, how do we do that? And how do we functionally, just mechanics go through it? Does it go through the full city process? Everything gets built to the county requirements as we do today, and then does it turn over to the county 100%? Or does the city, and that, it's a question, and some city staff was, well, we do it like now, we'd do the permitting, and it was, now you're in the ETA, you're gonna, you're just creating the same problem we have. Or does it just go over to the county 100% 'cause it's rural residential, and does the county do all the building permitting and everything from the front on it, and just go from there? Those are a lot of the discussion points. There's no decisions that have been made. It needs input from the elected officials, not just staff trying to work through the mechanical issues of how we try to just honestly and openly debate this and go, go through that. There's, we've thrown out ideas, the city staff has, there's ideas that each side hates and, and try to go through. We've had parts where, as we said, our last direction from public input, and last direction we got on the, from county board is, especially 'cause the testimony from people in the ETA is they want it eliminated, and it's, okay, if it's eliminated 100%, how does the city feel comfortable with what's done as we move forward? 'Cause the city has put a lot of time and money and effort into things that are good, as in defining, this is where the water mains, the big ones need to go, this is where the sanitary sewer mains need to go, this is the stormwater issues. Let's not throw out all this data that we've had. Do we need to develop new ones? Do we need to look at a whole new land use plan based off the existing land use plan, but that has input from city and county, and has to pass the city commission and the county commission to be able to do a combined land use plan? 'Cause the growth of the city of Bismarck is in the best interests of Burley County also. We don't want to create problems, but, and we still need to have organized growth that makes sense, and not just, we're out there going yee-haw and going wild and having fun on it, 'cause we're just gonna create more problems as we go down the road. And our question to city staff has been, if that happens, what does it take for the city to have that assurance that that's not an issue? And we've thrown out all sorts of ideas. It doesn't, we don't know if any of them stick. They might be, we know some of the ideas nobody's gonna like, but it's, 'cause everybody's, well, I want control of this area, and it's, it's tough to give up control, and it's tough to have change. That's just human, that's just human nature. And it's, how do we have, instead of that emotional reaction, how do we have reasoned, rational discussion? And let's just have it openly and honestly, and let's try and find a way forward to make this, be able to work, 'cause I think the proposed takes 95%, 96%, whatever the number is, out of the existing ETA. That solves your short-term issue, and if you have the urban service area, you have potential long-term issues. And what are they, and are you just trading the right now for later? And as the county, it's, well, these are all the areas we don't want to deal with in floodplain, 'cause it's very difficult, costs a lot of money, especially with CRS program. Well, it's, okay, it's getting put onto the county. There's no guarantees we have, Mitch gets more staff to deal with such a thing like that, but all this stuff does come in, and it's, how do you honestly just deal with this on a day-to-day basis?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rich.
Well, I was at the city-county original meeting, and the county commissioners made it really clear to us, they wanted to eliminate the ETA, or all but eliminate the ETA. Whatever we relinquish, the city back to the county, that's, that's gonna be the counties. It's not gonna be the city making any decisions on it. It'll be all yours.
I, yeah, I agree, but part of what we talked with city staff is what helps the city be comfortable that it's not just gonna turn into, into the Wild, Wild West. Nobody wants that. And it was, do we, granted, there's some laws you really have to work through. If the, say, the city, planning and zoning, what if we look at changing that? And under law, it says, well, we have to have so many people from these different areas. Well, also under law, and the lawyers have to look at it, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but is, if we do a negotiated ETA boundary, maybe we can change how that looks under that negotiation of the boundary, and saying, hey, it's reduced. Now, we're, instead of potentially having the, all the ETA members and a county commissioner on the city planning and zoning, do we remove the ETA members, 'cause the ETA's gone? That's not needed. But we have two county commissioners on the city planning and zoning, 'cause the city of Bismarck is still within Burley County, and Burley County has an interest in the positive, healthy growth of the city of Bismarck. And then for the county planning and zoning, it's, okay, do we look at changing that then, too? 'Cause the city has legitimate concerns of how it grows into Burley County, and do we say, there will be four people from the city of Bismarck? There'd be two city of Bismarck commissioners and two people from the city of Bismarck, then there'd be five from the county, 'cause the city of Bismarck has a vested interest in how this goes. And say there's a development that happens adjacent to the city limits. We had, this is just ideas, nobody's saying this is happening, but one of the ideas was, okay, if it's right next to the city limits, you're going into the city of Bismarck, period. You have to go through the entire process, you're annexed into the city, that's it. If you're a little bit further out, you're doing a development, we have that joint land use plan, whatever that might be, that's been approved by both boards, and we follow that portion, and if we're not following it, it has to go through the joint process. Going through there, which, I remember the days when we had joint, the joint boards going through everything, and that, I had hair when that started, and by the end, that's why we renegotiated the ETA boundary on there. But it's, how do we do that in an organized manner? Well, currently, we have a method in the ETA. City staff goes through it, but they contact county staff, and we give our concurrence, saying, yes, we agree this meets and can go forward. If we don't give our concurrence, we have to put that in staff recommendations to planning and zoning or city or county commissions, that staff does not concur on this. There are two different parts. Well, instead of the city part, it's now, where the county would have to be getting city concurrence. Well, instead of the city part, it's now, where the county would have to be getting city concurrence and going through there, so that way, there's always that vested interest and communication, so it's upfront communication. And there's ideas, people have been, oh, okay, thank you, really wanna think about it. I know when I got this the first time, and I, I had it, I had to sit down and just kinda really think about, okay, what's, what's pros, what's cons? What's good, what's not? And some of the county ideas we've had, and some of the city ideas are, they're just different, and it's, they each have good and bad to them, and the, the city commission and the county commission are gonna get the very difficult job of trying to get everything put together on what's, what's agreeable to move forward.
So, so when is the meeting going to be?
September seventeenth at 5:00 PM is the joint board meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Rish.
I just want to follow up. So, you're suggesting if the city reduces the ETA and relinquishes some of this property back to the county, the city will still have some say on the development of stuff outside the ETA?
I think it, it would have say, it doesn't mean necessarily a hundred percent control, though. 'Cause you would have input on the planning and zoning board, your city staff would have to be consulted, talked to. And you know, say you're ten miles out, I'm sure the city staff would be, not really our issue on there, but if it's something closer, they'd be, hey, we have this water main study, which, and we've all agreed we're gonna follow this, we're gonna do these points, and we wanna do this in an organized manner that doesn't just blow up the world. And if we need to do more stormwater studies that are further out, we can certainly look at that. And how it gets paid for, that's the fun job commissioners get of how to work all that stuff out. But I, it's, I think we can all work together to find something positive moving forward. But it's definite change that makes county staff feel uncomfortable and makes city staff feel uncomfortable, but it's kinda, we gotta find a way forward on this.
Commissioner Conley.
Commissioner Rish, Chair Commissioners, and I'll help you out a little bit, Casey. Is, nothing's been determined, nothing's been, he's not saying, other people aren't saying. It's merely, this is a discussion that citizens have been begging for, for a couple of decades. Talking to Senator Dever, he heads that committee at the legislative session on the ETA discussions that are statewide. And he said out of over a thousand bills, it was the most difficult one because of these recurrent conversations. And it's right at our doorstep too, every day, day in and day out. So, by having both commissions together, we're just taking a swing at, can we look at it differently in a way that benefits both the county and the city as we grow forward? And maybe takes away some of the animosity and stuff that we have from some of the citizens, because there's a question of representation. When we were at the joint meetings, it's a big one. I asked that to be added on when the mayor, I was actually surprised at what they came to the table with when they presented this map, and that was one that I didn't see. It was, is pretty awesome that they brought something new that hasn't been part of the conversations in a long time. But nothing's changed at this point. That's gonna be up to all ten of us when we, the five of people at the county, five people at the city. So, all ideas coming forward, but they're actually putting some teeth into some of the avenues, and that's what this map is. But there's some things that, I mean, people have talked to me that I'll share at that meeting. I'm not gonna do it here, because this is a, I think the reason why Mitch brought it up, and I was gonna bring it up during other business either way, but is inviting everybody from here or people that they talk to to that meeting, so we can have those honest discussions, and hopefully, we can vet out the bad and grow into the good.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. There, there is so much that's attached to this that people don't understand. We're gonna, I mean, this, this has been zoned for the last forty years to Burley, Bismarck standards. We're gonna have to adopt not just urban standards, but rural standards and a new comprehensive plan, land use plans, future land use plans, the whole thing is gonna impact this, this board. Not, not to mention the amount of complaints and code enforcement that we're gonna have. 'Cause these subdivisions are already built out. The revenue, permit revenue fee is gonna be nothing, you're gonna have one for a shed or anything, but it's gonna be more complaints than anything.
Commissioner, Clay.
There, one good example of that is Imperial Valley. Imperial Valley under city zoning is R5, R10. County zoning, that doesn't exist, and lots are too small to meet R2, doesn't meet R1 on there. So, you're having to address, how, how do we, just do that, 'cause nobody's saying, oh, Imperial Valley, you gotta rebuild. Nobody's, nobody's saying that. It's, you have your existing homes, we will make it work and get it figured out, but that's part of the mechanical, day-to-day discussions that we have of, okay, how do we get that to work then? And how do we fairly and honestly address it while trying to get the city and county code so much closer? 'Cause this works for Bismarck and Burley County, but I also deal with City of Lincoln, Menoken, McKenzie, Driscoll, Sterling, Wilton, Arena, and they're all different in their own rights on there. So, we, we always, you're, you're trying to find the best balance that you can.
Commissioner Zera.
It's probably a question for the city commissioners and the county commissioner here, probably more than anything, and I'll be the first to admit that I am neither a smart man, nor have I attended any of these meetings up to this point, but it's just a question, because obviously, this is a huge administration nightmare for both city and county staff to get everything to gel. And there's always gonna be, regardless if the ETA is in existence or not, there's always gonna be these weird little gray areas that is right on the edge of the city, but there's, or there's gonna be a developer that wants to develop something to city standards, but they're a mile outside of the city right now, well, you know, and there's always gonna be those arguments. And my biggest question, and I'll digress, but my biggest question is the argument that I've heard, 'cause I agree, I've been hearing the, we need to eliminate the ETA argument for fifteen years, so ever since we moved back. So, I know, I know it's been going on even longer, because the biggest argument is taxation without representation, right? They don't have representation, even though they have, even though the city has jurisdictional control over these people that feel that they're in the county, but they're in the ETA, and there's always that argument, right? So, instead of going through all of this, has there ever been a discussion of just giving people that eat, that live in the ETA voting rights on city issues? Because that honestly, to me, seems like it'd be a heck of a lot easier than going through whatever administrative nightmare this is turning into.
I wanna follow that up. Currently, people in the ETA pay school board taxes, right? I mean, they'll pay to, do they get to vote on the school board?
Yes.
Elections? Okay, all we have to do is assess some city taxes, and they can vote.
Commissioner.
That's a simple solution.
Yeah, but then, you're, again, you're getting into jurisdictional control, zoning, all the other stuff.
Go ahead, Casey.
One thing, if you assess city taxes, that would have to be considered, is by law, you have to provide city services somehow, and there's many, many ways to do it. On there, I think that's the part where, both sides have pros, both sides have cons, and there's challenges either way, and you're gonna have an administration challenge no matter what. It is how we've looked at it, and it's, so right now, the city staff proposal is, the people that are in the ETA, ETA, you're out, we're done. And, and, but they still wanna reserve the urban service twenty-five-year area and the urban service fifty-year area. And Daniel's map has all the other colors and all that fun stuff to it.
Commissioner Conley.
Well, tax is a pretty broad term. There's a lot of taxes, and there's a lot of taxes that county individuals pay in there. It comes down to a discussion of the ones that pay property tax versus the ones that don't. They pay the fees to the city for permitting, but they don't get to vote for the people to make the permitting decisions. That's some of the challenges. So, if you're slicing and dicing it, we just, the budget that was approved last night was over four hundred million dollars. The property tax version of it, I believe, was about seventy-two of that. Everything outside of that seventy-two, on some level, there's a lot of Burley County citizens that pay some of that that aren't grants.
The bulk of it's water and sewer.
Bismarck city residents.
Yeah, but now, some of that property tax version, because of the three-ten sales tax, there's a lot of Burley County citizens that are gonna help us build the new police station.
Man, and two.
Yep. So, I mean...
Bismarck residents pay seventy-eight percent of the property tax for Burley County. Bismarck residents pay a lot of the sales tax on the Burley County sales tax. There's all kinds of stuff out there.
Yeah. So, it just walks us into a black hole, is what I'm saying.
I think it's gonna be quite a relief from Bismarck, not having to oversee all the ETA.
I think maybe at this point, maybe what we need to do is, is plan on getting to that meeting and discussing this there. This is really not the place to be discussing this.
Yeah, and we're just, we're just trying to show, this is some of the information being discussed.
Yeah.
That's all, and you can tell there's passion on each side. On there, we, we've had it with city staff too, but we've always been, okay, how do, what's the rational reason response that we need? What's the pros and cons? There, there's no, if there was a perfect silver bullet to this, we all would've done it already. There, there's gonna be compromise, and I don't, we, we wrote some ideas and suggestions, and at the very end, we said, we know there's parts that are just gonna flat out be hated by both sides on this. But there has to be true compromise on both, both sides to find a way forward, to make this work. And what that is, really open to debate on that.
Well, I think that's really what we need to go, we need to be at that meeting, so be here and understand what's going on. And that meeting is, you said on the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, 5:00 PM in this room.
Where at, in this room?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Let's respond to a comment you made about they don't get to vote on who, who hires their building official upstairs or their code enforcement, that sort of thing. It's not a political position anyway, it's appointed by the commission. The idea is that we wanna make it clear, a lot of people don't understand the ETA, the purpose of it. They're, it's confusing to a lot of people, they don't understand what, why is it even there? Why, I thought I was in the county, blah, blah, you know, and so. I mean, they don't understand organized land use either. But it's, it's where they're at, and so it's, it's a problem that they perceive as whatever, they don't wanna be in the city. Well, the thing, they're not gonna escape anything by going to the county. We still have building codes, we still have flood plain regulations. They're not, it's not gonna be any easier for them.
Yeah, but that county building inspector's a lot nicer than the city one.
Yeah, maybe if we have to do all this, he won't be too happy. But it, you know, it's, the idea is, is it's gonna be, it's gonna be the same. These flood plain regulations, those are federal law. We cannot ignore them, we cannot do, oh, we think we can do a little softer on this one, and, you know, a little easier on this guy. No, it's gonna be identical to what City of Bismarck enforces. And so, it's, you know, there's some, some education on this that needs to go, talk to those people in the ETA. 'Cause we haven't, haven't heard from a whole lot of people from, in these meetings, we haven't heard anything from these people, except for the ones who are complaining about the building codes and the permitting and the flood plain regulations. Those are the ones that I've, I've heard from. I mean, I'm getting calls right now from people who live in the ETA about building out there.
So, we need to go to the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
And, and then we can bring our questions and concerns up there.
Yeah, I don't, it's public hearing.
Okay. Thanks, Mitch.
Okay.
Right, because of Senate Bill 2180, there, we're required to have the public comment time, so there will be people talking.
Is there any other business?
They don't have to make the decision, this, 'cause it's not a hearing, they don't have to make a decision.
Do we have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, or stand in the adjourn?